Okay, it's 5:30 PM, so I will call our meeting to order.
Steve Heron.
Here.
Benny Morfleister. Jean Enra.
Here.
Nicole Jacobs.
Here.
Carol Hunt.
All right, can you stand and join me in the question?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number two is approval of the agenda. Any changes, Michelle?
No.
I entertain a motion for approval of the agenda.
I'll make a motion for the agenda today. One second.
We got a couple on the consent agenda. I'd like to pull out, uh, letter C. Yep. And, uh, letter E. Okay. Pull those out and then you will...
I apologize, you said it. Carol.
Carol, yeah. So we will pull those out of the consent agenda and we'll do them right after number six.
And this is a particular deal, but just something on here. Letter G, there's a risk of getting water.
Water. It's water. I actually thought that's what it was.
I thought maybe it was water.
I'm like, all right. Sorry.
Go to the sun.
Further down.
Go to the sun, hold it there.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, yeah.
Okay, well, I'll see you in the end, we'll cover those between six and seven.
Can I ask a question on that particular item? I was talking with her this afternoon and she said there's actually three programs that have to be approved.
Just one with us, though, just one of those.
Okay.
All right, so any other changes, requests to the agenda? Here now, if you either, let's see, will vote for approval of the amended agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say aye. There. Okay. Item number three is public forum. Is there anybody here for the public forum? Number four, city announcements.
I'm, no, I'm just trying to get back from some things.
Okay.
I'll turn with you.
Yes.
Yep.
Okay, item number five, I entertain a motion for approval of the consent agenda excluding C and E.
I'm going to mostly go for the consent agenda.
You want a second?
One second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say aye. Okay, here's number six, water treatment. I think that's you. Are you, Logan?
It is, yes. Uh, Logan Smetl is DGR Engineering. Um, I think you're familiar with our firm on the electrical side of things. I had a few meetings over the course of the last year, I guess, not year, discussions with Kelly, uh, talking about the drinking water side of things. And kind of, I guess, there are these strengths for them is, um, your, your water, I believe, if you're coming from some shallow aluvial wells, we'll call it, you know, on the north side of town here, um, that, uh, they do have a little bit of manganese in them. Uh, you're at a lot, 0.3 milligrams per liter is your concentration of manganese in your water. And that's something that Kelly and I recently did some testing on. We ran some tests, you ran some tests, we had a couple labs to corroborate those results too. So that's kind of where we know they're at. Um, manganese right now is a, uh, it's not a regulated contaminant on the EPA's list of contaminants in drinking water. However, it's considered health advisory right now. And that amounts that they are as, by 0.3 milligram per liter advisory, um, for consumption, for continuous consumption. So, as part of, uh, the bipartisan infrastructure law that that's put out a little while back during the pandemic, promote the economy, they had a program in there that is to help address emerging contaminants. So this is, like I said, it's a health advisory, they're calling it an emerging contaminant. So, um, at the concentration that you're at, that's 0.3 milligrams per liter in your finished water, actually, I think you can get up to, it's a 30 or 40% loan forgiveness opportunity on that. I think we, originally I thought it was 30%. You might be pushing up to 40% loan forgiveness as an opportunity. Now, what that means is, you have to go forward with a project to address that manganese in your water there, which would look like treating your water with something more advanced than just adding a chemical. Right now, um, you're adding polyphosphate, which in effect what that does, it, it keeps that manganese in solution so that it goes through your system and it doesn't precipitate out. Some places you'll go and you'll see black or, or red staining on your fixtures, say in the bowl of your toilet. Red would be from iron, black would be kind of from manganese. So anyways, what you're doing right now is you're, you're sequestering or keeping that in solution. It's not going to remove, it's just staying in the water. So to address that, like I said, it would have to be some form of treatment to, to remove that. So, I don't know that, I mean, um, have, have you kind of briefed council on this in the past a little bit, Kelly?
A little bit.
Okay. So the funding is out there right now as a loan forgiveness program. What, what they, that, that would be through, um, the Iowa DNR, their state revolving loan fund is the program that that would go through. That's one source. Another source that you, we could look at would be USDA Rural Development. They are pretty good about, uh, offering low interest, long-term financing for projects that promote rural development. So, what both of those agencies require, if you're interested in doing a project of this nature, is you have to do a preliminary engineering report. Basically, we need to do a deep dive into, into your water system and tell them why the project is needed. Here's, here's the condition of the system, here's the, um, the constituents of concern that we're looking at. Here's what we're proposing to do. Show them what we're trying to do to improve your water quality and, um, and what those costs associated with it, so that they can make a determination if they think that's a, a project that they're interested in financing. Um, so, that's what I, that's what Kelly handed out here was a proposal for us to do that. Now, this might be sprung on you a little bit if you're, you weren't expecting this, but, I don't feel like you need to do anything with it tonight, just think about it, talk about it, and, uh, see where you feel with it.
Sure.
But yeah, so what that lays out is, um, a couple things there. First thing, I have, halfway down that first page, underlined, there's a hydraulic analysis. That would be for us to take a look at your entire distribution of your water system, all your, all your branches, your mains, your laterals that go through uptown, and develop a model of that to see what kind of condition those pipes are in. Usually in communities that are small communities and all communities really, I mean, some of them lines are getting old. They're old cast iron lines that have been in place for 60, 70, 80 years. And, uh, it's not to say that means they're bad, but some of them are getting four inch or smaller lines that as you look to your street projects that maybe you're looking at now, and maybe you prioritize, maybe we ought to be looking at replacing this water main because it's, it's old and it's foreign, it's not in good shape. Or, you know, kind of, kind of helping prioritize if those things are coming up. That would look at, um, pressures in town, you're probably relatively stable here, at least say, we don't have a lot of elevation change, and then also look at your fire flow. Or you've got fire suppression capacity for hydrants.
This will also help us out with mapping, you ready?
Correct.
Our maps we have are from, maybe 19, one of them's from 1943 and the other one's from 1960 something, so we really don't, as far as the sewer and electric, we're pretty good on mapping, but, uh, water, we don't, nothing really.
You have that, and sure you know that stuff. What is that thing you got that's supposed to be able to do the hydrants and all that stuff?
That's if we know where stuff is.
Oh. I see.
Correct. Yeah. That's always a challenge too. Now, I know that's not drinking or, or drink water quality related, so that's not something that we have to do if that's, if you're really just wanting to hone in on the quality of the magnesium side of it. That's just something, if we're going to go in for a big, you know, for some, some dollars, you know, there's areas you want to address, maybe that'd be something to take a look at as well.
So are these going to cover the debt costs in terms of relative debt or separate?
Good question. Glad you asked. So, when working with the, the state revolving loan fund, which is the one that's due to the Iowa DNR, they have, you know, they understand that biting off a 15, 20, $30,000 cost for small towns is not a, it's not a small dollar. So they understand that. And what they offer is, uh, they're called their planning and design loans. What that is, it's a 0% interest, three-year loan that covers planning and design costs, so like this type of thing. Of course, you ever had to do more water quality testing. You know, whatever goes into our planning and design, our elders will be covered by that loan. At the end of that three-year term, what happens is if you go forward with the project, the cost of that gets rolled into your, your final construction loan that you execute working, you know. Otherwise, if you don't, it becomes due at the end of the three-year time. That's one option. Like I said, it's three-year terms, 0% interest. The other option that I haven't had a chance to explore too in depth yet for your community, but through the USDA Rural Development Program, they have what's called a SEARCH grant. And that's again geared towards covering preliminary planning costs. I worked with the town of Ashton, Iowa, um, on a water system project for them where they received a SEARCH grant, that was a $30,000 grant that they received.
They received SEARCH?
SEARCH, yep. Yep, S-E-A-R-C-H. I'm sure there isn't that thing that's in the form. So that's another option. There, that's a grant though, that's, you would have to pay that back.
Those are guaranteed if you give that to us as a grant, right?
Not guaranteed, no, and those are maybe a little bit more competitive since people are going after them. So, the qualifiers that you have to have, they're, you, and I haven't looked at this, but your, your median household income has to be, I think, less than 80% of the statewide non-metropolitan average. If you're less than that, then you qualify and you have to have a population less than 2,500. So what I can do is, I mean, I can ask the rural development folks and say, hey, you know, they'll, they'll have your, your income levels, that's all from the last census data. They can tell us that number and then they can say, ah, it looks like you'd be a candidate or not. Yeah, that was a good question.
And we can do both together?
Um,
State revolving and the SEARCH grant?
You can, yeah. Yep. You probably wouldn't do the, the SEARCH and the planning and design loan, you'd probably do one of them together.
So it's manganese only, because that is not a chemical, what is manganese?
It's metal.
Metal. Is there any other type of metals or anything in there on water that would have to be conservative in the near future?
Um, well, conventional treatments, what you would do is you would, you'd hit that manganese with, uh, oh, probably like chlorine or something on the front end where oxidize it, bring it out of solution. Then also remove iron. Probably have some iron in the water. So iron, manganese, if there's any hydrogen sulfide, that will remove that. Other primary ones that you can see in this area of the country that you can be conservative about are probably nitrates and ammonia. Those are convention, I mean, they're the source of, um, there are a variety of different places that those come from, but some of it is just agricultural practices from fertilizer application, and other, you know, ag, livestock, manure, if there's some of that that's influencing your water, some of that can be an influence. So those are two, two other constituents you want to look at. I don't know if you have trouble with them or not really. Yeah.
So what Kelly's putting in the water is a chemical, right? So is there, with that in mind, is there any, uh, natural filtering type processes to handle some of these chemicals or minerals or whatever? Metals?
With the metals, not really, no. And you can use systems like your, your household, um, water softeners. It's an ion exchange process where the difference in charge of the, the minerals will attract to the, the resonance in your softener. But the problem with that is you have to backwatch those with salt, which has to go to the wastewater plant. You don't want to load your wastewater plant up with chlorides, so you have chlorides and salt. It's not really there, um, if you were dealing with the nitrates, there's some, some bio ammonia. You can use biology to remove that, like actually grow some bugs in your filters and they'll actually consume that as part of their, what they've used to, to thrive on, but not really with the metals.
Which that's what we're currently looking at, isn't that what's going on?
Yeah, the manganese. Yeah, so you would be using, uh, it's called potassium permangene or chlorine on the, pre, pre-filter. Well, let's see here. Let me back up a step. Conventional filtration for, for metals would look like aeration, detention, oxidation, and filtration. So, one way that you can get the, the iron and the manganese to come into a particular form and add a solution is hit it with oxygen. Oxygen will actually, um, oxidize that chemical. So aeration is that process. What you do is you run it over to, run it up I, you run it over to like a big, a bunch of small PVC slats inside of a box that breaks that water into small particles so that you have more surface area for the oxygen to come into contact with that. So that kind of oxygenates your water, aerates it. So, to that end, yes, that's a pretty natural process, obviously. Usually that doesn't get it quite fully oxidized, so what then we use is potassium permangene or chlorine. You have to have chlorine in your water, no matter what, by the way that EPA rules work. You have to have a residual chlorine in your water, so you're already putting that into it. And that's, you know, to keep it sanitary, it's for bacteriological control, control and one of the other things. So we use one of those two chemicals to oxidize it, and that would be really about it. That's all you really need to do. And then you'd be running it through a, a set of sand filter, basically. Yeah, I guess, I'm, I'm opening the questions here, the second page. That's where I talk about the preliminary engineering report. So that's what we would have to prepare, um, to justify and, uh, show these funding agencies what, what project's scope would be and what the costs would look like. What we would want to do is, you know, take a look at your population data. Are you declining, are you increasing, are you stable? What's happening to your water demands? You know, when you build something like this, it's not a, it's not a 10-year plan, it's a 40, 50-year plan that you're looking at. You don't want to be running out of capacity in 10 years.
And that's, you mean population-wise or large?
Large, yes.
We probably, typically we look at both. Most of the time they'll, they'll correlate with each other, but say, for example, San Juan. There's maybe us because they've got the NPI in town that releases a bunch of water. But it varies community to community, how all those numbers correlate to each other, population, water usage. Or how green everybody wants their yards in summer, you know, like plays a factor too. Yeah, so, at, at the bottom of the second page there, I've got files showing $8,000 I've got as for the hydraulic model. $25,000 for that preliminary engineering report. Really, um, those are shown as estimated hourly fees. The preliminary engineering report, I would say that can vary from more like 15 to 25, really depending on how deep or dive we want to do and, uh, okay, we know we want to do a treatment. Do we want to look at four different styles of filters, five different styles of filters, to see what's the most cost economical? Or, you know, we've got a fair amount of experience that we can rely on and give you our recommendation for those. So, like I said, that's, it's not a lump sum dollar amount, that's going to be an estimated hourly amount. And what we can do there is, you know, every month that if we're working on that, we'll give you an update as to, okay, here's where we're at on dollars this month. Do we, do we stop there and finalize what we're done, what we've done to date and submit that, or how do we go about that? So we'd, you know, be open and transparent with you on that stuff.
So can you roughly estimate how many hours it takes to do that expansion, if I had done that in the past?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, it's probably going to be, I'd say in the range of $300, $250 to $300 at a time, I'd say.
Both, one and two together, the hydraulic and the engineering report?
Right.
And you do both, you have no sense, and you can't do the second without the first, and you have to do the first and you have to...
We could do the second one with the first. Yes, you, you wouldn't have to do the hydraulic model, that, that's not, that's something that, like I said, if you had areas of town that you were concerned about with the age of the water mains or fire flows in town that maybe aren't quite meeting much you thought you should have in certain areas of the community.
So we probably won't do that very often.
Yes.
We maybe won't do that either, if you weren't dealing with the manganese problem.
So yeah, you can really do either or.
Okay.
But we first want to check with these other things on the grants first?
I think that would be good, I mean, I was hoping to have that done today, but it was made a lot of sense. And like I said, I, the funding program that the, the DNR is, that it has right now through this bipartisan structure, coming, it's not going away immediately, like it's all going to be gone in an air. But it does have about two-year, two more fiscal year sums before that loan forgiveness opportunity, for now, is expired.
So how long would this, what you proposed here, take to finish?
Uh, I have that showing as 150 days. The hydraulic model. So let me back up on that a little bit. But I didn't include calibration of that hydraulic model in the, in the proposal. As that is a, that would be a, a bigger effort. So what I mean by calibration is, um, this would be uncalibrated to where I would get from telling what your best mapping sources available. You have our ages of pipe, um, height of your water tower, we can, you know, we can do some survey on that stuff too. And then we would put that all into a, a map and model that spits out the, the outputs that I'm looking for as far as pressures, fire flows, and so on and so forth. Calibrating that would require that we actually come here to town and sometimes when it's not freezing, we would actually open the hydrants and we would flow them out of, kind of, in a certain direction. We want to maintain a direction of flow when we're pushing out the water. And then we would record pressures at multiple locations while we're flushing those hydrants. And what that does for us, it tells us, okay, here was the pressure on the upstream hydrant when we started flushing. Here was the pressure on the downstream hydrant. How much pressure did we lose across that segment of the water? And that's how we would characterize the condition of those water wells. That would be, that would be an additional effort if we wanted to, to calibrate it. One of the things that I should maybe mention there too is, so that, do you ever get surveys from ISO, the insurance services office? They'll call you about so. Okay. So, there's an ISO rating which every community has. I mean, that's...
Because they talked about it, we don't know that, we didn't want to say it.
They already, it sounds like a fire chief must have said it.
Oh, okay. You said you did, you're...
They talked about it.
Okay, okay. Um, a lot of factors go into your ISO rating. It's, it's your water supply system, it's, do you have a purified apartment, or do you have a full-time hiring part? And that's what I figured, yeah. So, but on the water side of things, what can help improve your ISO rating is, if you have a calibrated hydraulic model. What that then impacts is all of your homeowner's property insurance premium. What that then impacts is all of your homeowners' property insurance premiums. If you have a higher ISO rating, I believe, you get a reduction in your, your property insurance premiums on that. I don't, I mean, totally up to you, if you can be interested in calibrating that model. If you want to see a number on that, I can certainly do that.
Okay. Let me see a number.
Sure. Generally speaking, it's probably, it's probably another twelve, fourteen thousand, what we would be looking at there, if we wanted to do that. There's no input effort that stayed constant in the past.
That's after an hour ago that you left some?
No, we probably do that hourly as well. If, if that's okay with you, unless you prefer long some.
Okay. Then you get back to us, so you're in check with USDA?
Yep.
Back us with that.
Find out what we're asked to do with that grant.
We've got you. You can say a course and talk.
Yeah. Yeah, I just, I'll back up a little bit. I kind of went right in, full steam ahead into this, but, uh, I've been at BGR for thirteen years now. On February fifth, I went to school on Rapid City South Dakota, School of Miners out there. And then came back this way. Originally, I am from the small town of Mallow, South Dakota, six hundred people. I definitely understand the, that way of life in a small town. I have appreciation for that side of things. Yeah, thanks for listening, and we're happy to help if you're interested in something, but certainly also understand that. Yeah. I'd like you to tell it, you've got other things that you're working on, too, so.
At, at what step in the process do we figure out ballpark costs of the findings in here? Should we then treat it and fix the problem?
Good question. I could probably give you some high-level numbers. And I talked about this before about water treatment, guys. I don't want to say, say too much, but we're not digging into scope. I mean, you're probably looking at somewhere in there, maybe five to seven million dollars for a treatment project, for, for a full treatment plant. And that would be demolishing your old facilities after the new treatment plant is out. New tank, ground storage, and obviously you've got all the storage already. Probably somewhere in there, all in cost, I would say. Yeah, it's not a, not a small dollar amount.
Are presumably, you know, grants or loan programs or things like that available?
Correct, so, yeah, so then, on the construction financing side of things, what that would look like then is, uh, so the SRF program, they have twenty-year or thirty-year terms on those notes that they offer. And just looked today, and the twenty-year is at three point seven nine, or I think it was three point seven nine percent. Let me just pick a quick look here. Uh, twenty years, two point seven nine. Thirty years, three point seven nine. So still a pretty good, pretty favorable term, really. And then the USDA, what they have going for them is, they'll go off to a forty-year term. So it really increases the affordability of those numbers. Obviously, you're going to pay a little more interest on those over time, but spreading that out over forty years. Annual terms of debt payments that you have to make on that mortgage. Their rates, the last I saw, the intermediate was three and an eighth for the forty-year. And if you get the, if you were to hit the poverty rate, the color, it's somewhere more like two and a quarter or two and a half again. And then, so with the SRF program, you qualify, because of the, the manganese, you would qualify for up to, it's thirty or forty percent of loan forgiveness. So, with a max of up to two million dollars. So you, you probably push up to that, two million dollars of loan forgiveness, or close there, too. Another offering that the SRF program has is, I don't always like to bring this up, but regionalization. So they would, they incentivize less water systems and more regional systems, we'll call it. So like, for example, I think there's neighboring rural water providers who may be.
Oziel.
Oziel, and rural water one to the west.
Those are those boys.
Cherokee and South, yeah. So you can get an additional fifteen percent of loan forgiveness for regionalization. So that's another, another idea, I guess. And that's something I think you, we want to look at to give you to consider as an option. Decision's yours on how you want to manage to direct the future here, here, but.
So that would be somebody else using our water, right, for your regionalization?
Uh, no, you'd be using somebody else's water, buying water.
Okay.
Right. You'd, you'd be addressing your manganese. So you qualify for both the, the manganese problem and the regionalization loan forgiveness percentages because of the water you're getting, but also that water maintenance.
Is that hooking up to Oziel's overall water, or creating their own?
Probably hooking up to Oziel's overall waters, but that would be like.
Something that could happen.
Yeah, yeah, there's, I, I'm like I said, I'm not on either, either camp there. I mean, some communities would really like the ability to remain independent and not be subject to, you know, utilities, rates. You kind of feel like you're being controlled, but at the same time, if there's a cost back there, it's hard to ignore that thing. So, all I'm saying is, in that preliminary engineering report, we give you that as an option. We don't, it'd be foolish of us to not at least look into this.
I don't see it all. Sounds good.
If you like, with the, like, the generation in this part of it, that's all I'm really looking to, wanting to do, is just to see where we're at, and see what it's going to take, and. So, so we have the option to plan ahead if we have to, just so we know where we're at.
I'll assume quickly coming deadlines, few, two years, seems like a lot of time. We're going to research and catch them, right?
Yeah, that, those buy faster than you get.
And it's the SRF, the ER, that has the forgiveness. The USDA, DA, just as well, right? They don't have a forgiveness.
They don't have grant opportunities, too.
Right, okay.
Yeah, there should be grants, and they know about those on the front end. Those get to be, um, they, they look pretty in-depth at comparing the DNR communities and other areas of water rates. I have to assume your water rates are pretty reasonable right now, probably pretty low in comparison to others, that probably don't want to get on the water system that you kind of covered.
That's what preliminary is, like, where water, where you involve in conversion, system.
When it rusts out, oh my gosh, is it so hard? I don't know what it is.
It's terrible.
It's awful.
Do you have much hardness here, or? Do you like that?
Not compared to that.
Oh, very good. But, not soft. Not the worst. Yeah, I think rural waters, they don't soften their water. But if you wanted softer water, really soft water, you could look at that as an option, too. That's another, it probably adds a softer layer.
So, do you over-design it all, or do you just design for the current situation?
Um, you, you, you want to look at, we want to do some water projections. We want to look, I don't know, forty, fifty, sixty years down the line. And all you can really look at is what's happened in the past. It's all you have for information. It's good, if I had a crystal ball, we could shake it and figure out what's going to happen in fifty years, I tell you. I'd make a lot of money.
That'd be a powerboat winner.
We can find that ball.
But really, we look at past data, what your trends looking like, what industry trends are looking like. Do you think that there's a chance someday a water-heavy industry could come to town? Cheese plant or processing, I don't know. But if you, if you have an ambition that that could happen, then you can kind of account for that, too. So to that end, we would want to set that up to grow into it. Or at least, design it in a way that can easily expand. Have something like that. So, all right, well, probably taking up your time already, so.
So thanks for your time. So we will, we'll, we'll wait for that information from you.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks.
About forty years, not too many other five to seven million dollar projects in town. Exactly.
Yeah, fixing that now.
Okay, we will move on to item five C. I don't know exactly how, what approaches we need to use the resolution for, or should I, they will make a change?
There's another updated resolution.
We have a, a blank sheet on your desk, because we, we missed, we intended to add grand bill, and we missed adding grand bill. Okay, that was my question, or whatever. I should have pointed out remote. And, and realistically, we could, we could take off, if, if we didn't only have four out there, because we only really use one currently, but we could take off, we probably wouldn't be using savings back to Pringer. That was a thought as well, to replace that with, with grand bill. And then we would just have the three banks that have some physical presence in Polina included. That's what I was going to suggest, keep the Pringer out, and the American. So if you would like to make a motion to that. I'll make a motion to approve resolution, resolution to approve depositors limits. If resolved by the council, the city of Iowa, to approve depositors limits of Iowa State Bank, Polina, two million, Security State, Polina, seven million, American State Bank, two million, and Grandville, two million, the city of Polina, and the savings bank, two million. Okay, a motion to the second? Questions or discussion? During the, all in favor, signify by a resolution, we'll vote, we'll vote.
Carol Hongkup?
Aye.
Nicole Jacobs?
Aye.
June Unrow?
Aye.
Danny Workmaster?
Aye.
Stay here.
Aye.
Okay. Thanks. And now we'll go to five C, I'm sorry, five E. Right. Um, I just stopped for the record, we should have, used to stand up and say that they accept the appointments. So it's a matter of record, yeah. Would you do that?
Do we have, is sworn in, is it?
Nope, not if they're appointed. Only if you want to.
It's where I am.
Carol, would you, if, if appointed by, if approved by the council, would you accept Mayor Proten?
I will accept the mayor pro ten.
Okay.
Clear.
Chief, Chief Bremer, if appointed by, if approval of appointment is for you as police chief, would you accept that?
No.
So we're going to have a motion on approval.
I'll make a motion to approve the mayor pro ten, Carol Hongkup, and the police chief, Nathan Bremer. Nathan Bremer.
Okay. A motion to the second?
Oh, second.
Any comments, questions? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Who wants to say aye? Here. All right, thanks. Item number seven is our police department K-9 policy. Michelle, who are native, there's claims.
I was a native, it's been a while since I've been there.
Officer Jonathan is already certified as a K-9 officer with a certified K-9. He's offered to perform those functions here. So he had a sample policy already, and reviewed it, there's a couple minor, very minor corrections. And then, and, I, I feel like it, the school, I don't know, maybe even before, I don't, I know he's, he, when he had reason to be talking to the principal, she had mentioned it, she'd previously mentioned it to me also, that they like to be able to run a dog through the school every once in a while. And those kind of, you know, they used to, when the county still had a dog, occasionally, they could get them to come down and do it, but they don't currently have K-9 officers.
So with that, there's the resolutions on your page thirteen, your packet. I would entertain a motion to approve that resolution, which involves adding the pages attached to the policy, adding K-9 policy and procedure to the police manual.
All right, yeah. Now therefore, it will be resolved by the city council of the city of Polina, Iowa, that they adopt the revised police policy and procedure manual to include a police K-9 policy and procedure.
Okay, a motion to the second? Any questions or discussion?
Do we have an actual police policy manual around here? Like, if we do?
Yeah, I might get a chance to dumb this, to dig it out.
Just wondering.
Which I guess, I don't know, I forget. Uh, one question, I, this actually came up with regard to the insurance, which this doesn't seem to mention. Is that, is that, I mean, was that something that didn't need to be in a good diet of mackerel, or?
It didn't, it didn't affect your insurance rates at all.
And, and I guess my other question is, or comment? This is the first time we have ever had, as a council exempt, a item, police policy updates, additions, adds. I mean, it's, it's, it's a departmental thing more so than a legislative thing. So I guess I don't know if this is necessary.
Sheldon has it in there, Sullivan has it in theirs.
Okay.
Someone just added it.
Yeah, just added it.
Sheldon's, did you get that through them yet?
Mm-hmm.
Yep, that's good.
Sounds good.
No, I wondered because I thought that was a lot of pages.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
So, this is a copy of Sullivan's?
This, this is a copy of Sullivan's, yeah.
Do you know what they ratified with the, it's ninety-four years in there.
Did they what?
Reta pass one of the planning, going through here that we got in the area. I just, to me, that would be a white something. Planning zone or review of ordinance? Well, the, yeah, the ordinance people. Oh, yeah, sure. There's one, Spencer. Yeah.
Yeah, that's working on ours, so. Now, when I, when I spoke to Sheldon, they didn't have an actual, they didn't have an actual ordinance. They would buy the policy procedure manual for the department.
No.
But they also have, um, their, their K nine's not just for, it's also one pursuit.
I think that was in here also, I think I read that somewhere.
Yeah, I see that too.
But I, I guess what needs to move to true is that this is, is this just a policy that he can add to his, uh, procedure, police procedure policy without us having to make a resolution and making an ordinance? And I mean, and I, I, I guess I'll throw in a, a K nine, I mean, that's a little bit different from our average policy procedure chapters, but yeah, I mean, I guess.
It seems to be standard practice, we'll check with the neighborhood council to, for the council to approve this K nine policy to.
Yeah, so, so, yeah, like I said, K nine policy is a little different due to the nature of the work, but I mean, like, right now, I'm reviewing, doing audit for our state's Iowa system, technical and use of the state systems craft, which has a policy, you know, every time we edit that, does that kind of come through here?
We should probably look into that, I don't know if the technical part of it does, or if just, if that's just more of a clarification operationally versus, you know, I, I would presume that perhaps council somewhere along the way approved the police policy manual.
Well, maybe the very start, maybe. But I even, I mean, just, just my experience, the past years, I guess I wouldn't bet on that.
Well, yeah, we will put it on, we can just add to the list, we can check into that to see if, you know, has changes need to be made to the police policy procedure manual? What kind of approval that needs.
I thought it went through the sheriff's office if they approved it. But I don't know.
What's that?
Do you have to get it approved through the sheriff's office? Okay, I wondered if you have to do that.
I mean, it's, it's, I mean, it's department-specific. Every, every, and the basic thing is just update it with regards to your experience and training, experience on the street, whether you need to correct something, case law updates, whether it needs to be updated, that sort of thing, so.
I think we're looking more at this more as a liability issue, more than anything in the K nine.
Is utilizing the K nine approved by the city.
Yeah.
Yeah, I guess, I guess one, you know, one, policy with a capital P, like, do we have a K nine or not? Absolutely here, but policy as is, what are we doing, you know? Well, ki- kind of like when we get to operational parts, the policy thing, it's like, is that something that needs to go to council review every time they make a change, kind of thing, you know?
I wouldn't think so.
I wouldn't either.
What do we do with the police department? Don't we approve all their bylaws? Or, or policies? What do we do with the fire department?
We have a copy of the bylaws.
Same thing.
The police department, or the fire department has bylaws because it's a separate organization created with the Iowa Secretary of State. Police department is just a department of the city, so we don't have bylaws, but we have a policy procedure. But I'm not sure when, when or if the city last redeemed the fire department procedures.
I think they just updated their bylaws. But I know we've had a look at the annulants once, few years ago.
So, it seems like they've used them periodically, just not frequently and not for, not for the things that have to be there, comply with state law and requirements and stuff. So, were the other cities, if not that, did they pretty consistent in how they handle things?
Yeah, Sheldon just, they had a K nine for a very long time. So, she couldn't give me any, like, updated information, but then, like, well, Sullivan, Sullivan's is, is fairly new.
Same officer, same dog.
Yeah. When someone started there too, that's why.
So, I think it's appropriate for the, the council to approve the, the procedure, um, and therefore know what's happening with our police teams and K nine.
I mean, I guess, I guess my question is, if when we do an update, do we have to come to you or is it appropriate to just basically slot you a new copy of what was been updated?
Well, we, we will check on that, so that's a good question.
Well, I think the K nine needs to discover that it's nice for residents to know that this is going on.
Okay. Any other questions or comments on this resolution?
I have one, I'll see. The Sullivan car, that was a K nine, it's a K nine equipped. Will he be driving the Sullivan car when he's here or?
Well, it's K nine equipped, how?
I didn't ask for details, I just know they come in.
I mean, I would expect.
Had a K nine, they had a water bowl, air, certain things, air conditioning.
I, I would expect, and Sullivan did, what we're going to do is basically just build a platform in the, in the one side of the rear seats and, and then he said he has a kennel that just squeezes in there.
Okay, any other questions, comments? Here, now, you have a global, please, John?
To Karen.
Aye.
Danny Workmaster.
Yes.
Jane Unrow.
Aye.
Nicole Jacobs.
Aye.
Carol.
Aye.
Here.
Oliver, on the subject, um, Ken did ask if we would post a picture of his dog tomorrow, since it was approved and kind of introduce him to.
Post it to Facebook page.
Oliver.
Oliver, sorry, I have a grandson, Oliver.
So, he just wanted to make sure that was okay with him.
Yeah, I think that's it, yeah.
Yep.
Okay, item number eight, Bunkers Spring Fall Lawn Application. We have that on pages twenty-three and twenty-four, no, just twenty-three.
Yep.
I would entertain a motion for approval. I'm looking at that, we did provide modern treatment service. Okay, do a second.
A second.
Questions or questions?
We'll be an addition of the, um, Kelly wasn't referring, I think it's.
The Southwood lots.
Southwood lots.
Woodlot, they're doing right now, and then the election is timed out there.
I thought that was on. No.
The reservoirs are not in the channel.
Yeah, that's what I.
Oh, no, that's the water reservoirs.
Oh, okay, that's what I was thinking, that right? Too. Because that's what I was looking for, okay. So, retention, huh, that, that retention is not on that field.
Yep. If we get that out there, so we keep it in front of it instead of.
And you said the other one was which stream?
The Southwood lots.
Which lots?
Oh, which, which lots, yeah.
We need to wait for this, since we got some more.
Yeah, it's more, okay, probably.
Yeah, because I have a contact with Bunkers tomorrow, and we can't ask for a new approval.
Here.
Yep.
Okay, so, a motion and a second, does somebody want to table that motion or do you want to withdraw? I would draw a motion.
Yeah.
Carol, you got that?
Yep.
Okay. All right, item number nine, A and B on page twenty-four. This is our IT Support Services, I entertain a motion for approval.
I'll make a motion, oh, a motion to approve the IT contract.
For a second.
A second.
You want to explain the.
Yeah. Yeah. Um, three months ago, we were having big issues. And I got very frustrated with them, and I emailed them and said, we have to get something figured out here, my phone wasn't working right. And, um, we have a box, have a box up on there, and that's like our.
Tractor.
Yeah, and that wasn't always on. And so, he told me to hold off on paying any invoices. So, not only did they lower the price from seven hundred and, about seven hundred and fifty dollars to three seventy-seven ninety-three, the last three invoices of the year, he also lowered almost two hundred dollars in invoice. So, and everything now, they got with, um, with Jamie from TCA, and everything seems to be working fine now.
The phone?
The phone, I had any issues.
Because you had it constantly.
Yes, it was awful.
Yeah.
I don't know, I'm so frustrated.
Well, you said what, now they went to one firewall, is that what it was?
Yeah, that's part of it. Yeah, TCA, you know, the firewalls were kind of, well, they were competing against each other.
So, now they're working together?
No, they're just one, we only need one firewall.
Okay. So, do we have TCAs or theirs?
We have theirs.
I would think that'd be right.
Good.
So, everything's going well, and this is much better, much better. Um, there was a lot of things that we weren't using, that we, things that we could have used that we couldn't use. And, yeah, they, they were the.
So, this is going to be the price for the rest of the year, isn't it, Sheldon?
Yes, this is for the whole year. Unless you find some other issues that you.
Yeah, unless I get married again.
I hope not.
I did take up.
Good job.
I did take the opportunity to talk with DJ up at Sample. And he made the offer that they would come and look at things, if we wanted them included, and, uh, that they would actually go out and research other companies for us if we're not totally okay with, with, kind of, uh, if they're willing to deal with everybody, so that on the table, just. Can they explain the future arrangements?
But otherwise, you're happy with them?
Yeah, and it wasn't, it wasn't just, it wasn't just, um, A and B, this TCA too, this local. And, uh, city of Primgarth had some, just had some of the same issues with the, the competing firewalls and.
Took them a long time.
It's funny, you start this, February, February.
Okay, any other questions or discussion on the motion? Here, now, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say aye. Here. Let me ask one question, I mean, when we get a new contract in, or is this, that is a period or?
This is, it'll start in February.
Okay. So, the contract, so if something is filed, that is expected.
Right.
But it will be a new contract or will continue on as old contract?
This is the new contract, whatever you do.
Has legal looked at it in some order?
What's that?
Has legal looked at it? I don't. Need to.
I do.
I was just wondering if there's liability in there. I'm always concerned about liability clauses.
On the monthly invoice?
On the, on the contract, just a question. This is just an invoice here.
Have them, give them a jingle, ask them. I would think they're happy, something they have to back themselves up.
Okay. Item number ten, official newspaper. Should we look at it?
Yeah, there's, I left this on the table for everyone.
Publication, posting notices.
If everyone could take a little bit of time and read through that. The law, the code hasn't changed, the amounts in our last have changed. Okay, so, Marcus Times has offered to, um, that they would publish our legal notices at one cent less per line than the state negotiated price. It does, it doesn't, it's, it's nothing that goes against this code, it just isn't how the code was written. The reason, the reason they wrote this code was to keep newspapers and cities from bargaining on prices or, um, different newspapers from, um, kind of like, um, I don't know what I want to say, excluding other newspapers because they, they put the price so low, that's what it was for. What, what Marcus News did is, is nothing that's, that's illegal. I mean, there was twice. It was, yeah, it's just not something that's not generally done, but obviously Marcus.
I've been in a price for it before, for a hundred percent.
And obviously, Marcus News would like to have a business cap, so that's why they, they offered this lower price. And then we have the other one from Northwest Iowa Review. And they charge what it says on that, yeah, state, yeah.
So, entertain a motion. Legal by the code.
Legal by the code, yeah.
Well, I'll make a motion for the resolution. Be it resolved by the council of the city of Polina, Iowa, to designate the Northwest Iowa Review as the newspaper for publication of legal notices and reports, of proceedings for the city of Polina, Iowa, as required by law, for the year of two thousand and twenty-five. There's a, type of one nine.
Okay, a motion for approval, resolution with a second.
All second.
Any questions or discussion? I need somebody who would give a word on, I can do that. And hometown newspaper.
Um, I think if, if it's a hometown newspaper, I think we should have hometown news. I know a lot of people are, are not happy that it is not necessarily a Polina, um, paper. It's more of a Primgar and Sullivan paper, and I could probably have quite a few people contest to that.
But we're not.
Aging from younger to older, though.
But we're not here to determine what the newspaper, what any local newspaper puts in their paper. We're here to determine whether we want the legals printed in the local newspaper.
But he just made a comment, though, that it's our hometown paper, but yet we don't have hometown news.
Yes, you do.
It's a give and take, though.
That has no bearing on our decision to put the legals.
I'm going to keep my decision the way that it is. You can, you can vote with me or you can vote against, but I'm going to keep mine the way that it is.
I understand that, but I'm, what I'm saying is, what, the decision we make here is only the decision where we want to post the legals in which newspaper we want. It's not for us to decide.
So, then it shouldn't matter if it's a hometown paper then or not? Correct?
What I'm seeing is it's not us to decide what the content of the newspaper.
I think you're having conflicting, conflicting comments, though.
Okay, I'm a call, call order, just a minute, we're not going to get into arguing, personal arguments here, which is kind of where this is leaning. I think we just need to make a decision, um, of, of the council, where we're going to post our legal publications. Well, if you look at it that way, then we should go with the least cost, and that's one of the things.
Well, Brian Tony's about times earlier. Well, Brian's going to spell things for you.
Okay, any other questions or discussion on motion? Hearing none, I do, that's the resolution, so a little call, please, Michelle.
Nicole Jacobs.
Aye.
Carol Hongkow.
Aye.
Jeanne Nro.
Aye.
Danny McMoister.
No.
Steve, oh, Steve Hareman.
So three ayes, two noes, motion passes.
Well, I guess if you're relevant, I could find out what the people, what they're telling you, could take a poll. I don't know.
I remember people here last year, it's four of us, and we all waited for the review. Nobody's here this year, because of not being used. And yes, we'd be cut a poll.
Because the reality is, from a order standpoint, the, the motion is gonna go around, so we need to move on to the next agenda. Okay, agenda item number eleven, financials.
Okay, uh, Maureen and I were supposed to get together yesterday and do financials, and Maureen is ill.
Oh, no.
I almost had them done, I'm fifty dollars, fifty dollars somewhere. So I will figure that out tomorrow and email everybody all the financials.
So these would be, these wouldn't be approved tonight?
No, it was just, it was just to get them to you guys, so. So I will email everybody, and if, if somebody wants me to print off a copy, please let me know, and I'll do that, too.
Michelle's had a tough one, so our thoughts and.
Thank you.
Yes, and we appreciate it.
And it's a busy time, too. It's, it's.
Yeah, there's, there are a lot going on here as well, as I know.
Are you doing them weekly now, when you're balancing item where you've got about that? Um, not, not quite weekly, but every hour. When things are staying closer. Yeah. It wasn't, it wasn't too bad this time, but, well, they're all getting smarter, better.
Good.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, thank you very much.
Item number twelve, fiscal year twenty twenty-six. Is that weird to say twenty twenty-six?
It is.
Uh, review budgets received to date. I think, I think the plan here was as, as getting them just for us to sooner versus later become familiar.
Yeah, and this is nothing that's set in stone. Like Matt was, Matt called me, and he could not make it tonight, he was concerned, and this is just kind of a review. And then we just said what's our, yeah, yeah. Nate's, Nate's is always pretty, pretty good. I mean, yeah, he does. Yeah.
I like to reestimate the whole thing.
So the, so the change from twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five, the third column, to the newly proposed column, could you just, so that's up.
Yeah, mostly when I started looking through prior planning, was kind of out of the, I think at one point, first note maybe, I mean, because those are what you hear, you're not about, I think at one point you had offered somebody in the low fifties, and they still turned you down, as I recall.
I don't think that was offered.
It might have been an already certified guy.
Yeah. I think that one gentleman from over, well, I don't know.
But anyway, so I plugged in fifty thousand for, for second officer, where it was forty-three.
Okay.
So that's, that's most of that, I think. Some of it, plus, plus the addition of part-time, and this was figured. Budget's assuming that we magically have a second full-time officer for the entire budget year, and then there's also part-time because of the fact that there's four to, four to six to eight weeks of field training first, and then also the entire sixteen weeks at the academy that we'd be.
Can you magically get one for us?
I wish. So that's, that's where the salary increase went, and then I think for that first section, otherwise I think it's just group insurance change is the main of it. The ones with the little equals at the end, the, like, an Ivers, Zimmerd straight calculations off of, of what you think you're paying out of salaries, so.
I see that on it, for, for this current fiscal year, that when you budget forty-five thousand for police vehicle replacement, next year is just seventy-five hundred, is that just to accumulate some over time, or?
Well, that's, and, well, the, the way, for lack of a better way of doing it, the, the budget for next year is actually ten thousand, of which we, of which the plan would be to expend about seventy-five hundred. So, I, like I say, I, for years, it's been, is this the best way to represent this or not?
Got it.
But yeah, the, the budgeted money is everything above the third from the bottom blue line, and then, and then in that one section is what we plan on expending that budget year from the police vehicle replacement fund. And then at the very bottom is what we expect the police vehicle fund ending balance to be for that budget year. So the plan is, and it's actually gotten pushed off a year or two because of lack of personnel and/or, uh, changes in costs and/or, uh, there's one other thing that I'm not, I'm drawing a blank. But anyway, so, so the plan is that if, the, well, one, well, order bank, the order bank for a police vehicle opens usually February, March, and closes by usually October, unless they fill it before then. So the plan is, as soon as the order bank opens up this spring, is to get an order in, to get the vehicle on the way, and I have no idea what lead times are anymore. They used to be, uh, what? I think the last one we ordered is in October, and it showed up in January, but.
And these are state vehicles, I think?
Well, we, what we generally do, when, when I, when, when the order bank opens, what we'll generally do is have our options laid out, and then we'll, we use that, we use the state bid for comparison, but the most recent one, they actually changed it, so it's not quite as useful. We used to actually list out what the state price was for every option, and they don't do that anymore. They just list, like, three or four option sets that they order, and then which options are included in that set. So you don't really know what the option itself costs, but, uh, anyway, we, so we take what we're looking for, and we'll usually send out to some of the area dealers, what, what would you charge us for this?
So the part-term, part-time officer using the second vehicle now?
Yeah.
Both of them up and running out of garage?
Yeah. So yeah, that's the one.
What year are, are two thirds?
Uh, the one up for replacement is a twenty fourteen, and the other one's a twenty nineteen.
That's the one that you tried? Do you feel the part, the part times are going fairly well?
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's a give and take. I mean, it's more, hopefully it'll be better going on, but having to get everybody set up on all the different systems and.
Sure.
And brought up to speed, you know? And then, so, you know, the immediate advantage was more control when they're working, because they don't have all the administrative backlog hanging over their head. And, and then, and then providing me some time periods of time off, you know, after the energy. So like, now tomorrow, we'll have our second one start. And I, he's admitted, admitted himself not the most technologically savvy, savvy, uh, it'll probably be a little bit, get him up to speed, but once he's up to speed, that'll, he'll actually have sixteen hours in a day that I'll actually have off straight, so I can start scheduling appointments and stuff, but.
He's the second one you've got?
Yeah. On the list. So, yeah, my, my, they just kind of put give and take here and there, depending what your priorities are, what's most important to you upcoming.
I wonder if you've had any conversations with EMA, right now, EMA Jared Johnson, I went to a budget meeting for them, and he brought up, especially the part-time officers, if we need radios or things like that, we should check with them, because they have some funding that they can potentially.
I'll look at that, I mean, right now, we, you know, we have two portable radios, and right now, without a second full-time officer, it's easy for them to swap out out of the office, but.
Sure, yeah, the radio, or even if there was a vest, or anything that's needed, you know, check, feel free to check with them, same, same thing in the fire department. I think they did something, they had some funding for a couple of, how about for the southern parking officer situation, so this is worth a check.
Okay. So then the second section, mainly training costs, you know, assuming somebody gets sent to the academy, and all the costs associated with that, and everything else, I think, is pretty much the same.
Oh, and then, maybe, what is it?
I think for police, you do it for one part too much, but that would be setting up somebody new and have a little bit more there.
Okay, thanks.
Yes.
Thank you.
Um, ambulance, Amber worked on this, pretty much by herself. So it's the first time she's, um, using Lori. So is Lori done now, then? Like, she may have come in, but it wasn't gonna be too much longer, but I didn't know for sure.
I know she was stepping down from the administrator.
Yeah, and that, she was definitely, she's leaving, actually, the ambulance. So there might be some adjustments on this. So first, you, if you have their income now, Lori, twenty-six, five, another forty-five. And then the rest is our expenses.
So they're, so we're comparing the new total. So their current budget column, third from last, right?
Right.
So how does that end up there? Negative?
Well, I think they subtract those. I don't know. I didn't, I didn't bring out it.
At the bottom of the third and last column, twelve ninety-three, towards that. That just means that the cost is twelve ninety-three more than the income.
I think it's the other way around.
Cost is more.
I left it out today. This is too far to be an income.
Let's, let's get told, told on this. And see what's going around, so we can deal with budget.
Yeah, I don't have these on board, a spreadsheet thing, but these were just the, the receipt I did.
Yeah.
And I just got a few scribbles on the originals at this time, maybe we'll get it, or we heard of it.
Are you looking for expenses tomorrow? I, what's that? Seventy-one by expenses. Not a, I was looking at total expenses in the bottom line, so. Excuse me, that's your, seventy-four thousand fifty. Okay. Now, I look at the penalty, seventy-four, so, no, seventy-five.
And the next one's fire department, and Lori, we'll give this to them.
At the MS?
This is my copy, slight little notes on it, because the DM said that they stated the truck, they could cut fifty to twenty grand, and.
Sure.
Yeah, so the second is, yeah, first thing they'd like to do, right?
And that's one thing, we're talking, you can touch base with Jared Johnson, if he wants to, if he has some potential funding for that.
And then we have Matt from the library. That, fifty-two thousand for the replacement of the HVAC. He did tell me they're gonna try to get some grants and.
He told me they were gonna still check around, too.
Yeah.
He said this was Fred's bit, but he said the council, or whatever he calls it, are still gonna check into prices.
It just seems, it seems really high for.
I do too.
I think it is.
I think so, too.
There's existing stuff in there, like the guts are in there.
All of that's out.
Commercial application, all that, Jesus Christ. It's amazing.
Well, I suppose.
Are they there on, are they on the ground or on the roof?
Yeah, I think on the side.
Do they, do they bring any vacuum that's outside of the roof, or if they're outside, on the ground?
Yeah.
Probably better than, yeah. So you take that fifty out of there, last year they had budget two thousand remaining, so take that out of there, that's ninety, versus, I think their budget, this industry for current fiscal year is seventy-nine. So it's up about ten thousand. It looks like it's all, as I was looking at this, all wages, because you get wages in the bottom two items, ICA and IVERS.
It's eighty-one, eighty-seven.
Yeah, so you're, you're fifty-eight, and I think that combined number was like. So basically, the, the bottom line is it's all in the wages, costs.
How many employees did they have? So Matt, we have Jeff, Laura, Mark, Eric, and Doug. Wasn't Doug in the, whoops, a good. Yeah, the hardware. Oh, yes, yes, okay. Just those three. Or with.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Laura, too.
And thirty-five is no longer.
Either.
Oh, she doesn't. So they, between.
All of the wages.
Can you kind of check what some of the wages were?
Yeah.
We can have a workshop. To see how that compared.
As long as it focuses on, you know, grants or fundraising or something.
Yeah.
It should be up to us. About that.
Well, you could use some of that money that we, that they gave us when they first came in to, to help with that HVAC, if that can go any lower. I still think that's up to us. Is it, can somebody else do it, too?
Yeah, I'll take it.
Because it's actually a media that, uh, do you know that stuff, anyway? Is that somebody else that's putting that, too?
Don't, don't need any notifications.
Probably need different names.
I would think.
Okay.
I would think, so they don't need, yeah, it's a mean name.
All right. Well, well, the. Well, B. What are you looking at first?
So, well, B, oh, so there's a little calendar in there. And we, since I, since I, I missed the last, the last, we have to reschedule or cancel, well, I think it's the time.
I don't think we have one there.
Okay, so we need to schedule. Yeah. And if we. Oh, it's a loose.
Oh, loose sheet?
I was going to say, I thought I'd seen it.
The whole back of the.
It was blank on this, so.
Something where it reads.
H two-nine.
Yeah, H two-nine.
I don't know if you see it.
I don't have the page two-nine.
Oh, yep. Somebody had that stuff.
Okay.
You don't have it at all. So if we could get one scheduled, as soon as possible, that would be great. I'm going to get the call this week so we can get this budget sorted. All right. This week or early next week.
So you'll be able to use them in all of your, your.
I do, yeah, before the.
You'd like to do it.
Yeah. I think it will go somewhere this, this time around, so hopefully, you know, it'll be.
Will you have the opportunity by then to have it in your spreadsheet version of the budget so we could go ahead and edit that?
Yeah.
Could you make it go around to someone, sir?
Is there one in Florida, so? That's not there, Tuesday. You know, I don't know if like, I suppose I can.
Tuesday's, Monday, Monday I have something.
Yeah, Monday I have something too.
So Tuesday's. Or Wednesday, both either.
Does that make it difficult to you? No, I, I, church was very young Wednesday. That's what I'm saying, Tuesday?
Week from tomorrow night, January twenty-eighth.
And I will be able to come.
Oh, tomorrow?
Probably will be there.
Or next, okay, yeah.
When, when can you come?
When Thursday?
How about when, how about Thursday?
The thirtieth?
The thirtieth, yeah.
That's weird.
First of all, what do you?
I'm going to go grab mine.
Okay, so what's money I have to pay for people? Point seven.
We've got two seven.
I, I, I said I had conflict, oh, I think you called me too.
I do too.
I currently have a conflict, but I could change.
Well, Mark, Mark, the tapes are in church.
So Wednesday?
That would be twenty-nine.
Twenty-nine. Those ones are twenty-nine, I could buy a ticket.
I've got that one.
But it might be late.
I was ready.
All right, I agree. What, what time is the time for you, between six?
I mean, we're not back to town till after six, but if you want to start, I can check with Heather and.
Yeah.
Well, we could do it six-thirty.
Well, a little too late.
Yeah.
I don't care.
If there's a, some to get down to.
I always said it's three-thirty.
It, I mean, it'd be, it'd be nice for everybody to be there, that way we're all.
Yeah, all right, so what's been going on?
Twenty-nine, Wednesday, six-thirty.
Six-nine, are we doing that?
Wednesday.
Wednesday.
You said that was the twenty-eighth?
Twenty-nine.
Kelly's bringing pizza.
Oh, no.
I seen him go, aha, I think he was thinking yes, but not, they were bringing it. I throw money in for pizza.
Sure, let's do it.
So someone's got to eat it. Leftovers?
What, leftovers?
Yep. And what time do you decide then?
Six-thirty.
Six-thirty, you know, twenty-nine, and that's our workshop.
Great, okay. Moving on to reports.
With the utility leadership conference in Ankeny this past week, they have good classes, the one was operating a small utility, just the struggles that small utilities have, I don't know, I think that's the one they're doing, but. You know, they talked about what small utilities go through compared to like bigger cities where bigger cities have their own utility operations, AT purchasing, the warehousing, financials and legal governance and HR or.
Holding or your.
You know, operation wise.
I'm not sure if you got it.
Well, they talked about the importance of making sure you stay up with your rates, don't get behind on that, they talked about a couple towns that are no longer municipal because they made poor choices. Part of, part of the one was qualified staff retention rates, and the other one was more what we would have to get, what's where they made bad agreements with, like the RAC or something where they got their power from and they were stuck with those for twenty, thirty years and it broke them, so I mean. And then. Greenfield and Spencer Municipal Utilities, Greenfield had tornado and Spencer had the flood, they just kind of talked about the stuff that, you know, the lessons they learned from what happened with them and one of the biggest things was making sure if you have something like that happen, make sure you document everything and I did get a form from Greenfield that helped them out, I mean, if you're going to have FEMA involved, you have to have everything and then some documented. Then we had a de-escalation class with the trooper. Got some stuff here, air regulations for stationary engines, but.
Anything on water?
No. We've been working on cleaning up streets, we've been taking down trees, we've been working on getting the switch gears, which is done from getting before they come in the spring, connections and whatnot. The sweeper is in Spencer getting repaired, we noticed there was diesel getting in the, the motor at the back that runs the sweeper, and they think it's an injection pump. Apparently looking on that, and Equinox, he's at Zoups, before I went to Ankeny, it died on me probably a dozen times within like two, three blocks, I got it back to the shop and then I got in it the next morning, drove to Ankeny and back and it was fine, I got in it this morning, same thing, so I got it to Zoups in there.
He likes long trips?
Must, must have wanted to get out of town, I don't know.
Where, where do you use the gas that thing?
Casey's?
I just, I, I ask because, oh, months last month, we had Kane went to get in the nineteen and if it would crank, just fine, it would not fire. Five days trying it every day before that thing started and then one time after that we had it where it, you got the same thing, you got in and it wouldn't even fire, and that time I got in it and from the very get-go did a flood clear and it started about four or five hours later, so I don't know if there's any relation there or not.
Yeah.
Whether it's a fuel issue or.
Yeah.
Yes, I know, like on, before I left, I put some Lucas fuel treatment in it and then when I put fuel in on the way back, I put the ninety-one, ninety-one octane in it just to see, you know, or just hope it would get second level.
I've got cases virtually all the time, so they're eighty-seven.
Eighty-eight.
That's, that's, that's all, we never had a problem with fuel vehicles, so.
We're usually using an eighty-eight, fifteen percent.
My brother-in-law says he'll want eighty-eights and he's runs a repair business. It's not even with it at all.
Okay. Let's see, we're at, we're, we're at a Lit Pike project.
I mean. Because, because now it's, it's all the administrative side, so the law has been, everything is caught up as far, as far, you know, right now. She's, wants to send letters out with our bills on the first, before the first, so.
They have to return their.
Yeah.
What does that project do?
Well, not for.
Two years, you told me.
Because all, the.
But other cities are, but the other cities are, we need to get out.
So we're on top of it.
Yeah, so, yeah, so we help her stuff. Because they have newsletters and. Newsletters? Lit Pike inventory.
And then please probably try to get them back, get them, get back to us.
Well, I said, put some big letters or something on this letter, that it has to come back.
Can we put it out with, now Facebook too, and maybe something in the post doc?
Well, that's what I said, to put it out there that if they don't have it.
Pictures in form where we're coming to. We don't want to do, right?
No.
Okay, let's talk, say, pushing hard.
Well, I wonder, like, post office, I think it'd be good because your older people don't, you need to look at Facebook.
Exactly, so let, let her with those.
Yeah, so that, yeah, she's started to.
I don't know, have to send it on yellow paper, I don't know.
Something they're liking, I don't know.
Yeah, maybe, maybe.
I don't know, yeah, try it out.
All right.
I will be, G Works is going to call me and talk to me about the cloud, looks like we switched over to that by July.
By when?
December.
Well, December.
But you said some of the others are switching though.
Yeah, Brimberg's are switched.
To what?
Key Works.
Oh, they've done that, I thought they were switching to another.
Okay, you say, what, didn't you say Grandville was looking at something, they were looking at something else? Yeah, I know Brimberg had some early pickups, but they also did a online bill pay, which I think we desperately need because the way that our, the way that we do it, taking credit cards over the phone, is not ideal and.
It takes a lot of time.
Yeah, and when it goes through the bank, say like, you might have a thousand dollars in one day, but when it goes to the bank, it just, it goes through other days, so it makes bank records even that much harder, plus we're only charging the two dollars per transaction and, yeah, we're losing money there because they kind of just want to do that.
So why don't you check if it's, if you know that, what's your, what's your take?
Let's see, a few things, we have a new business that's going to open in town in April, a new body shop.
Oh, I heard that.
Paul and Hope, Jeff Case.
Who?
Paul and Hope, Jeff Case, she was, she was Hope Fox.
Okay.
We live on the south end of town across the county building, on the last house. So he bought, they bought the little body shop building, had the share of something a week ago, last Wednesday, and they're busy working their nights and weekends and he's currently working at Live Shop and Shelter. It's going to be called Paulie's Custom Painting, I believe, that's what he has.
That's what I'm looking for.
Yeah, yeah. So that's exciting, now we're going to have that opened up again. Jeff Case? T J, T J E T K E S. I presume, I, I can also, Jeff Case is like a silent. I'm not sure that's right. Seems like a nice young couple.
Good.
Talked to him a couple times. Let's see, then a quick update on properties, let's see, Michelle called another, listing really state agent on the whole thing, not interested, so we have to continue to get general, keep looking on that. She got an update from Mercy on Clint, and they're supposedly will be out vacating the building end of, by the end of January, so then they would, they have forty-five days beyond when they let us know.
Because they have so many things around them.
Yeah.
They're vacating January, so. But they're, they're, they're all, they're not real good to be here.
Hard to get. Clint, we're still working on a couple potential options. And then our, our vacant residential lots, talked to Todd Hederman, how to, how to best get some property values on there, which is what we need to sell them to in the development, so he gave us some direction on that, the one that would probably be different just because of size is the, I call it Johnson lot, Maple and Broadway, that's a large lot. So, in, in the next few weeks, get them, get that settled, get a new meeting with Clint Development Group, so they're going to bring something back to us, but we could be thinking about those, we'll talk about as far as the covenants, which I think what, you know, my notes are we landed on are the important ones are built within two years, a home of a certain value, I think we picked two fifty, so, but that hasn't been approved by the council yet, because we're, we're at, so we'll be acting on that sometime in the future as well.
And you already talked about that one that they cleaned up, the early one, or it's back three minutes last minute?
Okay, any updates or comments from city council or Clint, which I want to say?
Well, yeah, we, we, we proceeded as far as with the generators, is it MRDS or not? Is that still all still on the table, you know?
Won't be going away until the finance to talk more about it, finance being.
Oh, wasn't it supposed to be a million, but did it end up being more now too?
Well, you told me a million, that, you told me that the generator would be around a million and the rest of it was, I mean, I mean, you need a foundation before you need to get a, to your substation, you need a building around it and.
So then it's like two point one, another one point on for installation.
I think we kind of need to, when we pursue this, be serious.
I think just like with the water thing, maybe just get the preliminary done and just see where we're at and.
Otherwise.
I mean, we can.
Like a decision?
A, a decision doesn't have to be made, plenty of means this year or next budget, but I mean, at least we know where we're at and what we're looking at.
Can we do the preliminary stuff before getting grants or anything, because I know we can start getting prices and everything, then we can add.
Some of them you'd have to have the preliminary done.
Before?
Before, and that would be the.
Well, I have talked to Dan, it's coming with a little brain, but then he's.
Well, you've got to keep in mind our current projects, keywords, current projects.
Yeah. Right.
Those could be million dollar projects.
Everything's a million. Seems to be around.
We've got some more useless properties for, for the.
Back to the generator, I mean, should we put the, the generator on our next agenda item? I'm wondering if we can get some more information without, or can we get a proposal on what it would cost to build up from engineering on that?
Yeah, I can, I'm pretty sure we've already got, I can look at my emails, I'm pretty sure.
Okay, so if we could pull that together and.
Just want to see a, a problem, question looking at.
That's, you already did that before, didn't you?
Yeah, I think it was around fifty or something for the preliminary.
I'm just going to sticky.
Okay, anybody else have anything? Dave, did you have anything else?
Uh, just an observation, I don't know if anything could be done, I have the apartments, how their water gets charged is, kills a whole lane for a couple of car lengths with a layer of ice.
What is that?
I've been in discussion with them and we've cleaned it up a couple times and this spring they're going to reroute it to the storm sewer.
Should yellow apartments?
But like, yeah, as far as they can, right now it's not, it's not going to work.
So, so is that some water that they're kicking off, they're seeing? So, so is that some water that they're kicking off, that seems pretty?
Yeah.
It, I mean. It seems like an awful lot, you know, there's some leaking or.
And then. Is that gross stuff you put on, or used plus?
Used plus, it's on gross back just before.
As you're coming up to the start sign on a downhill.
Okay, sure. Slide it right on through?
Got it. Okay, thanks, man. So many examples in the apartments. Any else?
Um, I'm gonna say that I think Lana's been doing a lot with the uses, um, problems that we've been having, she does call Nicole or I or text us, but. She's been handling a lot of it, so I think that's great.
All right, nobody else has anything? Steve? Can we, we're there? We have to say it?
I'll stick in.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.
Thanks.
Thanks.